Good evening and welcome to the February 20th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Commissioner Michael, or Commissioner Carroll, I didn't ask you if you would lead us in the pledge. Would you do that for us?
I would like you.
Thank you.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, loyal nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley, would you call the role, please?
Yes, Chairman. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present, including our two student Commissioners.
Very well. Commissioners, before you, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from February 6th. Any changes to the minutes? If not, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Carroll?
I'm just looking for clarification. I guess it's on the second paragraph where, Mr. Hurley, where I had, where there's a clarification on the project, but it was asking whether, or Mr. Conley stated, it would be harder, it would be more complicated if the annexation occurs before the final map. And wasn't it, wasn't it to be more complicated if the annexation occurs after the final map records? Is that, am I reading that?
Actually, it was, it would be more complicated before the final map records because it would change jurisdictions before the county approved the final map, which would complicate it. The same jurisdiction that approves the tentative should approve the final, and that's what we're waiting for to happen. So it would be more complicated if the annexation to Vista occurred before the final map was recorded because that would change jurisdictions between the time the tentative and the final is recorded.
Okay, very good, got it. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes then.
We have a motion to approve. Commissioner Jackal, seconds. Please cast your vote. And the minutes are approved on a six to one vote with Commissioner Kramer abstaining because she was absent last time. So we will move ahead then to oral communications. Oh, I'm sorry, agenda changes. Ms. Chow, any changes to our agenda?
No changes tonight, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Oral communication, this is a time on the agenda that we set aside for people to address items that are not on the agenda. I have no speaker slips, I don't believe, for oral communication. And seeing none, then we will move ahead to our discussion item for tonight. Mr. Conley, the Climate Action Plan, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is an update to our current Climate Action Plan, which is included in your packet for information. I just kind of want to go over sort of where we are with respect to the adoption of the current plan and where we're headed with the update that is currently underway. This is a similar presentation that was given to a community meeting back in January, and there's a summary of that in the staff report as well. I'm happy to go through it and answer any questions we have following the presentation. So some brief background, the Climate Action Plan, or CAP, was identified as mitigation when we updated our general plan in 2012 for significant greenhouse gas emissions that would occur from growth that's anticipated in the general plan update. So following the general plan approval, we contracted with a consultant to prepare a Climate Action Plan, which would mitigate, to the extent practicable, those emission impacts that occur from growth. It was completed and approved by the City Council in 2013, and that is the document that we've been working from since that time. It currently, the existing document, was a plan to reduce those emissions associated with community activities and municipal operations. So we look at both what we can do within the city and what we can do as the City of Vista. And that was all under the guise of Assembly Bill 32, which is what sort of started us down this road, the state's guidance. The current CAP allows some tiering and streamlining and secret review of GHG emissions. That's the primary reason that we're going back to update it now, is to make sure that we have a defensible, sequoia standard that we can use when we review new development for greenhouse gas impacts. And then finally, it helps us achieve our 2030 goals in the general plan of lowering energy costs, reducing air pollution, and improving public health. So our current CAP establishes a 2005 baseline and a 2020 projected emissions level. Under the current plan, we utilize the state's guidance in AB 32 to establish a target in 2020, which was supposedly 15% below 2005 levels. So that's the current goal that we have, and I'll get more into that as we go forward. We also identify a number of municipal and community measures in order to reduce those emissions, which I'll also cover. And then we establish an implementation and monitoring program and possible funding sources, which is kind of the same format that we'll be following for the update. So our 2005 emissions inventory goes through a range of different sectors to determine what our emissions are. There's five sectors right now in the plan: transportation, commercial industrial, residential, solid waste, and wastewater. And each one of those categories are evaluated based on information that's provided by those utilities or in modeling of those areas. And we calculate factors for Vista's generation of GHG emissions in those five categories. The updated categories are a little more broken down, which I'll get into, but this is just based on what's in the current plan. So we've identified a 2005 baseline emissions level, based on our emissions from those five sectors, which is identified in the table at the bottom, 547,000 roughly metric tons of CO2 equivalent. We have a 2020 business-as-usual forecast, which is basically if we continue going the way we're going in 2020, this is where we'll be. And then there's a target, which is 15% below that baseline level. And then, based on that target, we identify the amount we have to reduce, which in this case is 27,000 roughly. And we go through an analysis of the different measures that we can implement in order to reduce, to obtain that reduction and get to the target that we're shooting for. So this is just kind of general overview. Right now, within the six focus areas of our existing Climate Action Plan, we calculate a reduction of, or a reduction estimate of about 32,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent, and our target for 2020 is 27,000. So in the current plan, if we implement all the measures that are identified, we will meet our target for 2020. So moving into the update. We intend now to establish a new emissions inventory baseline. The year 2012 is what we're currently establishing as our baseline. This is where we have the most complete analysis of existing information for that base year. We'll then model business-as-usual emissions, which is, again, following current trends for future years of 2020, 2030, and 2035, and then establish recommended targets for each of those, and I'll walk through how we've done that. We'll review the, and update the municipal and community climate action measures. These are our reduction measures to achieve our targets. That's the next step in this process that I'll cover. And then we'll prepare the plan, which will again identify the implementation strategies and funding sources. And one of the things we're trying to do in this round for information is to be consistent with the other jurisdictions in the region. There are a number of other cities that are going through this process right now as well. Sandag needs to compile all that data for their regional transportation plan, and they also have a greenhouse gas component to that plan. They'd like to have consistent data from the jurisdictions across the board to incorporate into that plan, and so we're part of that effort with a number of other cities to update. Sandag's helping us with their consultants as well. So this is just a picture of what our current emissions inventory includes. Again, we have a number of categories on the left side there in the table. I believe there's seven categories, so we've broken down some of the categories from what was shown in the 2005 inventory. This is, again, in an effort to be consistent with other jurisdictions in the region. They've calculated the amount each category would generate. You can see in the table on the right that the largest area of emissions is transportation, at just below 50%. The next is electricity, at about 30%, and then natural gas, and the remainder are small percentages: off-road transportation, solid waste, water, and wastewater. And the new calculated total for each, each evaluated year, 2012, 2013, and 2014, are shown at the bottom there. And the 2012 number is the number that we're establishing as our baseline at this point. So we've established our baseline. Now we're going to get into projecting what the emission levels would be for each of those categories in the future years. So this table, which is also included in your packet in Exhibit 3, I'm just going to, shows the business-as-usual emissions for these outlying years in each of the categories that were evaluated. You can see there's a slight dip that occurs up to 2020, and then we start rising again. That dip is really just due to the current federal and state efforts to reduce emissions through technology that's being implemented in the transportation sector, and electricity, solar, renewable energy, et cetera, that's being implemented at higher levels than just the City of Vista. So, once we've established our business-as-usual emission levels for the future, we identify what our targets are and how we're going to attain those. And those are largely based on the State of California scoping plan. And the state establishes statewide numbers for where we need to get to with all of these target years, and then percentages of what needs to be attained in order to get to those outlying years. So in this table, although it's not shown, the 2020 target would actually be 4% below where we are currently. The 2030 target would be 42% below, and the 2050 target would be 81% below. So you can see on the table there, it shows what those are. These are just targets in terms of what the state has established of where we need to get in order to meet the established targets. The 2020 target was from Assembly Bill 32. The 2030 target was from Senate Bill 32. And the 2050 target is from Executive Order S 305. That's what we're using, that's what we're following, that's the state guidance. So using those, you've established what those percentages need to be for Vista. So we'll move to the next slide, which shows where we would be with business-as-usual emissions. That's the black line here that's trending down and then sliding back up. And the green line is what our targets are. So you can see, we would meet the 2020 target with our business-as-usual emissions, based on the state and federal reductions that are already anticipated. But the 2030 and 2035 targets, we have a long way to go. So in looking at those future targets, we're, in the analysis and the plan, we will identify what other reductions we get from current programs. So there is some acknowledgement of current programs that are in place that will further reduce that business-as-usual trend. Those include these categories. There's a renewables portfolio standard, which the state basically mandates, that increases renewable energy up to 50% by 2030. There's solar policies and programs at the state level, there's energy efficiency programs, and there's a federal and California vehicle standard. So all of those are taken into account to come up with what this is, which is our new table. So this is a little bit confusing, but if you follow the line here on the top where the orange is, that shows the business-as-usual black line trend from the last slide. And then each of these slices, I would call it, that are colored, the orange and the orange stripe, the yellow and the blue, account for the additional reductions that you would get from each of those programs that were previously discussed: renewables, solar energy, energy efficiency, and California vehicle programs. What we're left with at the bottom is the gap that we have to achieve locally, is what's identified on the table here, is the local gap. And so we've, we will be calculating what that amount is, which is estimated at the bottom of the slide here. You can see about 54,000 metric tons in 2030, and about 121,000 metric tons in 2035. And if you go back to what we talked about in our current CAP, with the measures that we have in place today, we get about 32,000 in reduction. So we have to double that roughly by 2030, and triple that and more by 2035. So we have, again, a long way to go to get there, in terms of meeting the state's targets. So that's where we're at right now, in terms of identifying where we need to get in our update. The next step in this program will be evaluating what we have in our current plan, where that gets us today, and what else we need to look at, what additional measures we may need to consider in order to get to the 2030 and 2035 targets. So I'm just going to kind of roughly go over what we have in our current plan in the way of reduction measures, so that you kind of have an idea of some of the things that we're currently relying on. And then we can open up the floor and have some additional discussion about any other ideas that the Commission might want us to consider. So if you look in your staff report, I'm sorry. On page 189 of 253, there's an Appendix B, which is a technical appendix for the CAP, and it goes through each of the measures that are identified here. If you want to get into the real detail of what these measures are and what's anticipated, you can read through this. I'm just going to briefly cover it for the purpose of this presentation. So existing municipal operations measures, this gets us a little under 500 metric tons. Again, we need to get somewhere to 100,000 plus. So these measures don't account for a lot of reduction, but what they account for are quantitatively addressed in this table. CAP implementation is simply a person at the city that's going to manage the CAP and take it on, so for right now, that's, that's me. Energy-efficient lighting is to increase our LED traffic lights to at least 80% of our lighting, which we should, which we should complete by 2020. Renewable energy is a goal to establish 150 kilowatts of solar energy by 2020. Employee commute alternatives is a goal to reduce employee commute by 5%, or employee commute VMT, vehicle miles traveled by 5%. Municipal recycling is a goal of 10% reduction in wastes at city facilities by 2020. With respect to existing energy efficiency measures, energy efficiency in building standards calls for 100% of new development to comply with the energy efficiency standards in the Building Code, which we obviously meet that requirement, since it's in the state code. Energy efficiency in existing buildings calls for 15% of existing buildings to implement energy efficiency improvements, with an average reduction of 15% by 2020. That's for all cities, building, all buildings citywide. I don't think we've met that standard in city facilities, but we're still doing the analysis for citywide. Smart meters, that was, those have been implemented citywide as well by SDG&E. Small-scale renewable energy, this is a goal of a little under 5,000 kilowatts of solar power installed by 2020. Again, we're quantifying what we've done in permitting citywide and urban forest tree planting, which is a goal of 500 trees planted by 2020, and we're about halfway there, at least for public projects that have planted trees. With respect to transportation and land use, this category gets us about 11,000 in reduction. Bicycle and pedestrian travel, the goal is to get a 2% mode shift from single occupant vehicle to walking and biking. Transit travel, the goal is a 2% mode shift from single occupantly occupant vehicle to transit. Commute trip reduction is a 1% mode shift from single occupant vehicle to carpool or vanpool. And smart growth is a goal of 5% of households located in mixed-use or transit-oriented development by 2020. And we have actually approved quite a few residential projects in smart growth areas, so we'll quantify that. Solid waste is the last category I'm going to cover here in terms of examples. Expanded recycling was just to establish a higher percentage of recycling access for multifamily and commercial operations. Edco is in a process of establishing a composting program for large operators, and we talked a little bit about that in the community meeting, and I'll present more information about that in the upcoming community meetings that we're going to have on the measures. And finally, construction and demolition debris, to get 100% compliance in terms of recycling of that. We also have community education and outreach measures and adaptation measures. Adaptation is essentially looking at the impacts to the physical environment that may occur. Those don't really equate to reductions in CO2, but we do have those because they should be part of the plan, and we'll expand on those as well. So to give a little summary, we've established a baseline. We have a revised 2020 target. We have new 2030 and 2035 targets, and we have to get a fair amount of reduction to attain those. So the next steps, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to talk about the community meeting. So we met on January 22nd. We had about 50 people in attendance. It was a very well-attended meeting. There's a list of notes that are included in the staff report, in the last page of the report, that identify some of the comments that came out of the meeting, very supportive of the city updating its CAP for the most part. Some of the comments that came from, from the group were more interest in electric vehicle measures and charging stations, things like that, that can support the infrastructure. There was a lot of discussion about community choice energy, which you'll probably hear from some of the speakers tonight, which is about establishing your own municipal utility to provide energy at a, at a higher percentage of renewables than what you may get from SDG&E. There was interest in increased PV projects and incentives, increased urban tree canopy and projects counting what we have in the way of our canopy and taking credit for what we can, improving energy efficiency in building, improving access to mass transit and connections to transit, which came out in a couple different categories, improving recycling and composting and reaching a zero-waste goal, and evaluating additional opportunities to preserve open space. These are just kind of some of the things that came out. There's a more comprehensive list that's attached to the report. So the next steps, we'll be updating the City Council next month with a similar presentation. Following that, we intend to hold a series of community meetings to discuss our targets and specific reduction measures that we may consider. So we'll try to quantify what we get from the current measures that are in the plan, and then take public input through a series of meetings on what may also be considered, and then try to come back with a comprehensive list of measures from that community input to get us to where our targets are. Then we'll draft the plan. We expect that to be in the fall of this year. We'll go through a public review period, and we'll release it for public comment, and then we'll go through a round of public hearings like we would for a land use consideration at the Planning Commission and City Council. So that completes my staff presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. What we really wanted to do tonight was educate you on where we're at, and get any input you'd like to provide prior to the community meetings, where we're going to be discussing the specific measures. Thank you.
Mr. Conley, we have a number of public speakers. Would you prefer us to hear from them and then open it, and then have a Commission discussion?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Kramer, did you have a quick question for Mr. Conley?
I can wait.
You can wait? Thank you. All right. Our first public speaker is Adeline Woodard from SDG&E.
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Adeline Woodard. I'm a Public Affairs Manager at SDG&E. SDG&E is proud to be a partner with the city, and we are striving to be the cleanest, safest, and most reliable utility. SDG&E currently delivers 45% renewables to all of our customers. You're the first to hear, or one of the first groups to hear, that we ended 2017 at about 45%, and that's up from 43% in 2016. All of that renewable energy comes from steel-on-the-ground projects. It does not include any renewable energy content from rooftop solar. The rest of the energy that we provide comes from low-carbon natural gas, which is the backbone of our energy supply in San Diego. When looking at your emissions, a big, a big area of emissions is from transportation, and that's like most cities. And we know at SDG&E, this is critical to address when tackling state climate reduction, climate greenhouse gas reduction goals. This is why we have programs to help reduce emissions in the transportation sector, such as Power Your Drive, which we install electric vehicle charging stations in places of business and multifamily unit complexes. We also have a really aggressive clean transportation proposal that we've submitted in, in response to SB 350, which will include installing electric vehicle charging stations in residential homes. The airport, Port of San Diego, encouraging dealership incentives, along with an array of other, other aspects for that filing. Another way to reduce carbon emissions is to reduce energy usage for both commercial and industrial and residential customers. SDG&E has a robust energy efficiency program, which we are excited to partner with the city on. There are multiple programs that US customers already pay for and should be taking advantage of. Our SDG&E marketplace allows customers to get rebates on energy efficiency products for both residential and commercial, commercial use. SDG&E also has a program called EcoChoice, where customers can sign up to purchase 100% renewable energy, which are from projects that are steel-on-the-ground built in San Diego and Imperial Counties. Lastly, we have been making great strides in battery storage and advanced technologies. These technologies allow us to store more renewable energy while maintaining system reliability. Please use us as a resource when doing this Climate Action Plan update. I'm available to you and any of the staff, and I'm happy to gather our experts to meet and assist in any way that we can.
Very good. Next speaker is Rebecca Medici.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Medici. I live in Vista, in District 1, not very far from here. And I'd like to thank Mr. Conley. I was at his presentation, and it was excellent.
Could you pull the mic down?
Sorry. I was at his presentation, and it was excellent. And we, we have a group of people here in Vista who are very interested in, in getting the Climate Action Plan going. And we would like you to look into community choice energy, as well as some other, you know, particularly solar energy, rooftop solar energy, parking lots having solar energy on top of them, like the nice parking lot that you provided for us downtown. It would be great if that had solar energy, you know, like shade with solar panels on top of it, different things that we could do if we, as a city, invested in that, because of, a number of other cities are looking into it, Carlsbad, Oceanside, Encinitas, and Del Mar. Even San Marcos is looking into it, and I think it would be a very good move, because even though our 2020 goals will probably be reached, but we really need to, for 2030, things obviously, we're going to need to change a lot of things. And 45% of renewables, sounds good now, but some cities have 100%. It's not that hard to get to now. So I really would like you to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nancy.
Oh, Schlecht.
Okay, very good. Come on down.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. I am in favor of adding CCE to the CAP, so let me start with that. From the report that you all had in front of you, if you look on page 232, Table 7, lists rooftop solar. From 2012, there were 126 new projects, these are residential projects, added in Vista. By 2014, 466. So that's triple the amount of people in just those few years that put rooftop solar on their home. So I would imagine that, three years later, they say the total solar, sorry, total solar right now, rooftop solar from 2014, was 1,246. So I'd imagine by now, it's probably closer to 2,500. Now, this is very close to my heart, because we've had rooftop solar since 2012. Now, this is very close to my heart, because we've had rooftop solar since 2002. And you can imagine that if, you know, we, my husband and I are very, very energy-conscious, and, you know, that's why when we first bought our home here in Vista, that was the first project that we did, was put rooftop solar. And we've been very happy with it. So anyway, adding CCE to the cap, how will it affect me? Because I'm already getting relatively cheap energy, right? Well, with SDGNE, for people that already have rooftop solar or are planning on doing it, they only get four cents for the energy, their excess energy. So, you know, let's say, you know, I decide to put 20 panels on my house when I really only need 15, I'd be making excess energy. Well, SDGNE doesn't give you a very good price for that excess energy. With the community choice energy conglomerate, you actually get a better price for that. You get 20 cents for every kilowatt typically. So that's a pretty good deal. Let's see here. So anyway, so I would just like to really encourage the City of Vista to talk to the City Council and consider either joining the CCEs that are happening on the coast, because it's already, you know, Encinitas, Cardiff, I believe, is on their own. They're doing a separate one. So we could either join them, or we could do our own CCE. Either way, it's a win-win situation for Vista. More clean energy, more people put solar on their homes. The City of Vista could get a better bang for their buck by doing solar projects, and it doesn't even have to be really big solar projects, you know, like what Rebecca was talking about. Couple of solar panels in a parking lot, that's nothing, you know? I mean, that really would like pay for itself almost instantly. So anyway, thank you for your time. And again, I hope you will consider updating this Climate Action Plan and adding community choice energy to it. And if you'd like a more professional presentation, I have several contacts that would be willing to do like a, you know, private presentation or whatever. So, thank you. And again, my name is Nancy Oshlee, and I work with a group called the Vista Climate Action Planners.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Odoman?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this group. And I also want to really thank the planner for their really nice presentation. Really helped me to understand more about climate action plan. So my name is Cindy Odoman. I've been a resident here since the 1960s, and I am not no means expert in CAP, but very little I know. I have been learning about community CCE. And I know that it's one big way to mitigate our carbon emission is to include CCE as a measure in the Climate Action Plan update. Also with CCE, you can convert to 100% renewable immediately. As to when you are with SDGNE, it's only 45% renewable energy. Also, I'd like to urge that number of canopy tree be planted as, to be included in the cap update. I have been alarmed to see so many canopy trees being cut down along North Santa Fe lately, and I hope that there is a plan to replace all those lost trees by the City Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rich Alderson?
Alderson, yeah. Thanks. Anderson's a common mistake, but it's okay. I'm Rich Alderson. I live in Vista, have for 20, nearly 20 years now. And the other reason I'm here this evening is I'm president of our school board here in the community. And I'm not certainly speaking to you, because I don't speak for the whole board by any means, but as a community member, looking at the use of energy in our community and the valuable resource that it exists, I think it's, I'm very pleased to see the efforts that are being made by the city and the things that are going on, because it's a forward-thinking plan and that part of it. And I think that's a good one. But I do have to tell you a little story about this. And like Nancy, about five, six years ago, I did a remodel of my house, and I put solar on, you know? And for four years, I didn't have an energy bill. And I went around, and I thought I was the smartest guy in Vista. I bragged to everybody, I could tell, hey, I didn't have, I don't have a bill, you know, they true-upped every month, and it was great. And then year five rolled around, and suddenly I owed the SDGNE money at the true-up month. And I thought, what the heck? So I went back to really analyze it, and I realized that the reimbursement rate was changing. And over time, that has changed. And so now I'm beginning to look at this of, that's to the point of asking me to consider putting a battery in my house to not give them the energy that they're not paying me very much money for. Anyway, just that kind of element of looking at this, because I hear SDGNE, and I think all of us in the room know, they're the most expensive utility in the state of California. So the cost of things is really becoming critical, I think, to community members in that part of it. And solar is the latest and greatest thing coming down the line, and it's getting better all the time. But the other part of this I wanted to share with you is that I do believe that this idea of us as a community finding better ways to purchase energy and get it renewable and cheaper goes back to the school district. I would guarantee you that we are, one, the largest employer in the community, and almost all of our employees live in the City of Vista. The other thing is, the school district, we have a half a million dollar a month utility bill. And if we could reduce that utility bill by 10 or 15%, that's money that goes directly back to the children here in this community, because now we can use that money in another way. So that's a plug from the school district to just say, hey, that could certainly help us in a great deal. And as we all know, budgets are tough, and we have that part. So again, I want to commend you for the work you're doing on all levels, because I think we're Vista, and we're headed in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Superb. Thank you. Lisa Wellens?
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Lisa Wellens. I live at 410 Alvarado Terrace here in Vista. And I'm here to say that I support this effort, Climate Action Plan and the update. And I would like to see 100% clean energy goal by 2030. There are some other cities who are in the process of looking at that. Some have adopted that already. And those cities are exploring or have included community choice energy to make that happen. And Carlsbad and Oceanside are going that way. Del Mar has established a 100% clean energy goal. Encinitas has. San Diego has. And so I see this as a window of opportunity that we have right now, not only to just meet our targets, but to do something really good. So I think that including this 100% clean energy goal is one way that we can do that and ensure that we meet those big, steep targets that we were looking at on the screen. And a lot of people who are here, and a lot of people who aren't here in Vista, have spent quite a lot of time learning about climate action plans, learning about community choice energy, going to presentations, talking to experts, meeting with City Council members. And so I think there's a lot of support for this, not just for the community choice energy, but for the Climate Action Plan update, and that it be a good one. And so I just want to say that there's a lot of support for this, and let's go for a goal of 100% clean energy by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo Poole?
Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you all for your service and what you're doing. The city definitely has been showing lots of improvement, so we thank you and Mr. Conley for all your great efforts. I'm, I've lived here in Vista for 20 years. I'm in D1, and I'm also part of the Vista Climate Action Planners. I'm here in favor, I'm here to speak in favor of community choice energy, not just as part of greenhouse gas emission decreases, but also as an economic tool for development. According to Spurling's Best Places, the average US city has 28 days of sunshine per year. Vista has 258. Clearly, sunshine is one of the most plentiful natural resources here in Vista. Many cities and regions understand the importance of CCE. Three years ago, there were three CCEs. Today, there are 14. CCEs are not only good for the environment, but they are great for communities as they provide jobs, good-paying jobs. San Jose estimates 12,000 union jobs will be created with their CCE. Monterey, I did a quick look on Monterey, one project, 341 jobs. In Sonoma, CCE provided $150,000 back in community funding for special projects, you know, just for, you know, charity-type of purposes. Customers, and this speaks to what Nancy was saying, customers receive $570,000 back for excess energy costs. We need jobs. We need solar on people's homes here. I live in D1. I can just picture solar on all those homes and all those jobs that we would create to do that. In Apple Valley, they started a small, single-city CCA, and on their website, they say, "Now, now their community residents will have a local provider governed by local leaders whose decisions are inclusive of community interest." I'm asking this commission recommend to the City Council that they first assign a committed climate action implementation team to do this climate action plan. I think Mr. Conley has lots on his plate with all the development that's going on. And also, let's see our city thrive, okay? Really thrive by implementing CCE and move into the future instead of trying to catch up from 50 years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Davidson?
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak today, and thank you, staff, also for your time. Appreciate it. My name is Susan Davison. I'm a 25-year Vista resident. I'm actually an urban planner by career and by trade. I'm lucky that I'm not doing the cap in the middle with John and the rest of the group, though I've done many in my past life. But my current passion now is energy efficiency, and I've had the benefit of working in the state of California, both with the CEC and other groups locally, and both, mostly up in the Bay Area and Sacramento, on energy efficiency. So I'm here to actually say, in behalf of our cap, thank you for actually doing the work. Appreciate it. And would like to say that, given the rules and the statutes that are in place for us, we have AB 32 says we have GHD reduced, right, by 1990 levels? And then in John's presentation, it stated that we've got the executive order 40% below that and 80% below that by 2050. Okay? So we have some pretty high standards set in front of us. And I think what we've seen in the plan so far to date is that what we've had in play won't get us there. And so we have to make some choices. And so the cap plan is a document for us, for a city and also for the residents. It's a roadmap. It helps us figure out how to get there. And from an energy standpoint, a CCA or CCE, as their kind of interchange will be called, is one of the quickest and easiest ways for a city to get there. You're now seeing that in the last few years, there's 14 different CCA's been created in the state of California. That's not an accident, okay? It is working, and it's starting to work, okay? The City of Solana Beach, San Diego always moves at its own pace. The City of Solana Beach is the first city that's actually moved ahead with it. And in their initial plan, they're looking at about $2 million in program revenue. And so what happens is, is the CCA buys the energy. We still maintain our relationship with SDGNE. We don't actually build the lines, okay? The distribution lines are maintained by our partner, SDGNE. They provide good service for us. But the CCA actually goes out and gets the energy. So if we want to go 80%, 50%, 100% clean energy, we can do that with a CCA, okay? It starts to let us have choices. It doesn't affect the general funds. It's a separate bucket of money. And that money, what happens is that organization is run, and that money is rolled back into the community. And what I mean by that is, is that the CCA has stakeholders or JPA or however it's set up into play that makes decisions about where this money gets spent in the city or cities, however it's put together, okay, and what it's spent on. So if we actually wanted to do more energy efficiency, or we wanted to put in some more EV, or we wanted to actually sell energy cleaner or cheaper, we could choose to do that, okay? It gives us choices, all right? And so there are some very interesting rumors and conversations going on about, is it safe? Is it not safe? Okay? So you as our City Council, our City Commissioners and our Council also have responsibility to take a look at that. And we, as residents, expect you to actually answer those questions, okay? And I think from what I know that you're going to find is, it's a pretty darn interesting place, choice to go, and the risks are pretty minimal, okay? So I ask that you would do your work to do that and take a look at that, because this is a very good choice for us to move in that direction. So when I made a comment earlier about the forecast just for the City of Solana Beach, okay, they're doing, going their own way, they've got their own little drummer going on, right? That they're going to have potentially $2 million in retained revenue. That revenue goes back into the city. They're going to choose where it goes, okay? Doesn't go in general plan, all right? We're seven times larger as a city than Solana Beach. That could be potentially part of our revenue, okay? That goes back into, we get to choose what we do and how we're going to make changes to our city. So that's my two cents for that. There's never been a better time, okay? Because we do have other cities that are surrounding us. North County could have a CCA, not just the City of Vista or the City of Del Mar, the City of Solana Beach, but we could be part of a larger group. Up in the Bay Area, you've got Marin County, they've got cities, the cities continue to add. You've got Sonoma, you've, you know, you've got them all over the place that are examples for you to talk to, people who you could ask questions of. And so we think you have some good examples to actually go find out. So thanks for listening. Appreciate it very much. Appreciate being a resident in the city. Good day.
Thank you. Sarah Spindles? Speckles?
Sarah Spinks. I just want to tack on to everybody else that I think this is, this sounds amazing. The more I learn about it, the more amazing it sounds. It's like investing in ourselves, and we have so much sunshine. I think Mary Jo gave the exact amount of days. But this made me think about, while I'm sitting here, think about a news story that I came across not too long ago about a town in Texas called Georgetown, Texas. And the mayor set the goal of having their city be 30% renewables by 2030, and now they're looking at being 100% renewable because of where they went with their goals and how much money they were making back on the investment of renewable energies. So I think I'm just in favor of this, and I think it's the future, and there's sunshine every day here, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Jonathan?
Yeah. Thank you for inviting me to speak. Thank you, Mr. Conley. I'm here in behalf of believing in the Climate Action Plan also, but I have a little different take on part of the Climate Action Plan, which is the Zero Waste Program. I see everyone here talking about how they can save money and they can have energy-free solar and all this stuff, but the root thing here is, I look at the plan being developed in 2012, and then I say it's 2020, then I see it's 2025, 2030. So we're now talking 20, 30 years down the road. So what I'm thinking about is, what do we have to do for the kids? These are the people who are going to be here 10 to 20 years from now, and zero waste is a very important process. I'd like to be able to see that there's part of this is structured in education in our school system. Oceanside was one of the first cities in the nation to become zero-waste certified. Pompous Elementary in 2014, I believe, was also one of the first schools in the state of California. They were already 75% diversion for recycle, reuse, and recover. They have a composting facility, they have an organic garden, and even our own Belching Beaver in downtown buys some of their organic foods. So here we have a neighboring city who is, in my opinion, light-years ahead of us, and businesses who are buying product from them. I just would like to see- And businesses who are buying product from them, I just would like to see the city unified school district become zero-waste diversified, education. The kids are going to be here, as Sarah said, they're the future. We're all here. We're all going to be passed by the time they grow up. But we have to educate the root kids so that they understand, going forward, what climate action really means. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That was our last public speaker. Commissioners, open it up for discussion amongst us, or questions for Mr. Conley. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Conley, does that storage facility that's being built on Olive near Melrose, does that help the city at all?
You're talking about the battery storage facility?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a private developer who is building battery storage and is contracting to SDG&E to provide for some storage capacity during peak hours. So it does help the city with respect to that energy storage capacity. But because it's a private developer, it's not something that we can necessarily take credit for until they come online and actually can show us what they're doing.
Okay. Residential solar installations, does that help? I mean, I saw the numbers, but does that really help the city with the goals?
Absolutely. Every bit of solar installation reduces our electricity usage and our footprint, so the more we can incentivize people to install solar, the better our numbers will look in the future.
Okay. Tonight was the first time I've ever heard of, excuse me, CCE, CCA. So I don't quite understand it. Is it a holding? So they are the, they go out and buy the electricity? They take the residual electricity that we don't use? Is that what it is?
So I'm not the expert in this area, but I'll give you my rough understanding of what it is. And we can probably have somebody come and present to the commission that knows a lot more about it than me, if you really want to get into the thick of it when we get into our measures. But for the most part, my understanding of CCE is that it's a community-owned utility that provides electricity to your residents. So you basically take that utility away from SDG&E. It becomes the cities. In some cases, like in Northern California, it's multiple cities that come together and create a joint powers association, and they buy electricity for their residents, depending on what your goals are, whether it's a higher percentage of renewables, or lowering your costs, or whatever they are. You can try to structure it to meet those goals because you own it and you operate it. It's, it's the question that's come up largely in evaluating it is, what does it cost? You know, is it going to be the same amount for a kilowatt that you'd pay SDG&E? Is it going to be more? Is it going to be less? What are the benefits that it generates for the city? There's a lot of studies out there that have looked at it. We haven't gotten too deep into it because we haven't really been directed from a political level to look at it too thoroughly. We know some of the other jurisdictions that were mentioned along the coast are doing a more formal study to evaluate whether or not they, what the cost would be, and it's feasible for them to implement. Oceanside, Carlsbad, Encinitas, I think. We did not opt in on the study, but we are waiting to see, you know, it's just sort of been initiated. We'll be able to get a read as to how feasible it may be in our region from that study, and we may be able to join those agencies if they do, in fact, move forward and have some supporting evidence. But at this point, we're waiting to see what comes back in the way of that analysis.
So is it, is it appropriate, or can it be appropriate, if the commission agrees that we put in an item, a comment from tonight's meeting to say that we would like to have that looked into as a possibility?
Yeah, absolutely. That's perfect. That's the purpose of tonight's meeting, is to get the commission's input on those, on those ideas.
Perfect. Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Conley, I'm looking at the Appendix C that lists the cost savings and analysis of the different categories you addressed earlier. And I'm looking at it through the lens of, what are we, as a planning commission, going to be faced with, meeting by meeting, and approving or recommending, and then discussing as developments come in and get presented to us? It looks like Measure E2, which is energy efficiency in existing buildings. The, the cost analysis, and I assume the changes that would result in that cost analysis are probably not going to affect anything that the planning commission does. Is that correct? This is for existing buildings that voluntarily choose to make changes?
That's correct.
Okay. And then E4, which is small-scale renewable energy installations, this might be one that actually, we might be affected a little more by, whether it was residential or small commercial?
Possible, if there were some larger renewable applications that triggered planning commission review, or storage projects, like the battery storage project.
And then, following the changes in the cap update, are there any potential code changes or requirements for new projects that would result from this? That's what I'm wondering.
So there's potential for that. Right now, our code is limited to pretty much compliance with state law. There are some cities who have implemented more stringent requirements for energy efficiency, solar, power, you name it. You know, you can go all the way up the chain with requirements. It just sometimes adds, adds cost to the bottom line, and it's opposed by a lot of the development industry. So that's sort of the balancing act that, that we would need to look at. But yes, those measures can be looked at, and most likely will have to be looked at as part of this effort.
So the, as we stand right now, there's no direct changes that would result from the updated cap to code?
Well, we haven't gotten to the point where we've defined what those measures are going to be. We've, we've only looked at what's in our current cap, and what we're saying is, we have to go further than that.
Yeah.
And so we will probably need to look at those measures. And when we have, next step will be community meetings. We'll get that input. And then we'll come back with a more thorough analysis of, hey, this is what we get with what we have. This is what's been discussed, and what we get from each of these measures, and then we'll have to make those choices.
And without going into my personal preferences on what those might be, do you have examples of local municipalities that have higher standards than just adopting what California requires as a baseline? So whether it be the county or any other North County cities, that you, anything you know off the top of your head, or that would be something I would be interested in seeing for future discussion or having the city council look at?
Yeah, I can't quote off the top of my head. I know there's some Northern California cities that have some pretty aggressive standards, but, like Berkeley comes to mind. But I'll get you a name or a list of some of those cities and what those measures are. Even San Diego, there are some that have imposed some stricter standards, so I can define those and provide those to you as an update to this item.
And not even for me, but just, I would recommend that be provided to the city council and for the public to review, so we can look at where we stand, both in California and in cities that are more progressive or aggressive, as you define it. And that's all I have for now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very good. Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. John, a couple things. With the goal being reduced emissions, both in transportation and in structures, for the most part, City of Vista is almost built out. And so we're going to be able to recapture some of the economy of those emissions in some of the buildings. But really, it's going to affect the lifestyle of the way that we currently live, and within the buildings that we currently live and work within. I see it, I'm looking at it from a different perspective, but essentially, in order to reach those goals, there's going to need to be restrictions on the use of power and the use of transportation. So our lifestyle within this city and within, within this state is going to change significantly, even with modern technology. I'm in the building industry, and I've gone through a couple of recessions where, when building stops, so does everything else. And so there needs to be a balance of saving energy, saving the emissions, and there, we need to do that, but we also want to continue being able to build, because, as was mentioned earlier, where are our children going to live? Where are our grandchildren going to live? Unless they have a master's degree, they're not going to live in Southern California, just because of the cost. And all of these things have a financial burden on the existing residents of the city of Vista. Electric cars are really good, but there's also a road tax that's now going to be implemented on all of those people that have an electric car. Solar panels are really good, but as was mentioned earlier, now those, those reimbursements aren't what they used to be. So I'm all for saving energy and for reducing the emissions, but there's got to be a balance to where the economy of Vista doesn't collapse because we're saving this energy. So that's, really no questions, it's just a, an observation.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Garrison?
Yes, Mr. Conley, I'd like to change gears a little bit and talk about open space. The city general plan calls for roughly 4.49 acres per thousand residents. Do we have a plan for the future that says what land we're going to buy in order to maintain that?
No, we do not currently have a parks master plan that identifies future public acquisitions beyond what we own today. Palavista Park's the only undeveloped park that's an acquisition that hasn't been fully developed yet.
Okay. That's something I would strongly recommend. If we're going to have a general plan that says that, let's have a plan to implement it. Second point is land banks. Today's Union Tribune talked about the Daily Ranch and this idea of selling credits. And that's fine if you're going from city taking credits because we have the sewer project, and like Buena Vista Park, or Buena Vista Park now is a target of that, which means they're going to take a large portion of Buena Vista Park and turn it into some sort of a refuge of some sort, which means the park's not going to be able to be used on those sections. So my question is, how does that benefit the city when you take land over here and develop it, but you give credits over here? I, I guess I don't understand quite, I mean, Daily Ranch, I guess they're charging, they just increased that escondido from 50 to 100,000, or 50 to 80,000, or 72. So the question is, how does that whole thing work with, with land banks and trading and developing here, but getting a credit over there? So if you'd explain that for me?
It's all related to biological mitigation. So if you have a vacant property that has biological habitat on it, and you want to develop it, generally, the agencies want you to look in the city first for those mitigation opportunities, which we have very limited mitigation opportunities because Vista's pretty much developed. There's not a lot of native, natural, open space left. So after you leave the city, you look in the region, and in the region, Daily Ranch is probably the most viable mitigation bank right now that's been approved by the wildlife agencies that allows you to purchase credits. So that's where most of our developers go to, to purchase the credits that they need in order to develop their projects. If we have those opportunities in Vista, we would certainly capitalize on them, but because we just don't, we try to make sure that they at least still occur in the region. With respect to the mitigation bank you mentioned, there is a wetland mitigation project in Buena Vista Park to mitigate for the sewer program. This is the citywide sewer replacement of pipes all over the city. And so we've, we've analyzed what those improvements would create in the way of impacts, and we've identified one central location to mitigate everything in, so that we can complete our program and handle all the mitigation at one location. It would take away a portion of Buena Vista Park. It's a fairly distinct and separate part of the park. It doesn't get a lot of use, but yes, it would change the use of that particular area. The benefit is that we would improve our entire sewer system, and so when you flush your toilet, you know it's going to not be discharged into the lagoon someday because of a sewer break. I mean, it's the security of our primary asset, and that's really the benefit.
But we would be selling those credits to developers so they could develop a portion of land?
No, it's our own. It's not a project that we're going to bank and sell credits for. It's for our own public improvements.
Okay. One other question. Greenhouse gases are about 45% is tell-pipe emissions. And these, what do you call them? CCEs would have no impact on that 45%, correct?
That's correct, for the most part, yeah. It's, that's all energy-related, not vehicle emission-related.
Okay. Do we have any city that has fully implemented this and have enough success to know whether that's really something we want to get into?
That's a really difficult question to answer, but yes, there are a number of cities that have fully implemented it in jurisdictions. It's really a financial model that's dependent upon the size and the area that you're doing it in. So I don't think it's one-size-fits-all. You have to analyze, what are the resources for the area you're in? What's the distribution system? What are your costs and benefits? And that's what's being done right now with the coastal cities that we'll have a chance to look at. But it's hard to say, yeah, it works for Napa Valley, but, and so it'll work for Vista.
Well, one of the numbers somebody mentioned was, there were 14 cities.
Yes.
But have those been fully vetted? You know, put the plan together, put the CCE together, had enough information over?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer to that question. I can bring you back some additional information. I don't know that there's been enough time with those in place to consider it fully vetted. Does, you know, does it fully pay for itself? But there is a fair amount of study that's been done on the ones that have been implemented, and I could certainly provide that information as a follow-up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So, Mr. Conley, the state has these goals, these targets, and what is the penalty to the city if they don't meet those goals, those targets?
There is no penalty.
Right. Okay. And then?
I mean, the state's going to change that, I'm sure, at some point, but right now, there is no penalty.
Okay.
I should mention, though, the reason that we're doing this, that I mentioned at the beginning, was really to have a defensible SEQA standard for private development. So that's really the probably biggest risk that we run, is if we don't update our cap, we could run into some real problems of getting new development through the SEQA process.
Sure. Well, I, I think it's good to have goals, and we just have, if you note, as you noted, we have a large gap to fill, and it's where, where to pick up the, where to pick up the differences. And as Commissioner Looney said, we are fairly built out, so there is limited opportunity as far as the modifying development. But a couple of things that, that have come to mind as we were talking here is charging stations, EV charging stations throughout the city. As far as development's concerned, if, there's a possibility of, when there's a new development of commercial or industrial or multifamily complexes, that perhaps rev a certain level, hit a certain trigger, like we do for amenities or for percent of landscaping and stuff like that. If, if, based on the size of the project, it could trigger a certain level of requirement for EV stations at those units, at the, like, 20-unit apartment complex would be required to supply a charging station or something like that. Because how are these, how are these multifamily places going to have an electric vehicle? It's, you know, like, you know, you can do it fairly easily at your single-family residential, but there's, and these are the, these are the people that are living close to the train stations, you know, that whole concept, are not able to incorporate the electric vehicles at all, even though they're supposedly not driving anywhere. But, so that, that's a thought, is we could put in some triggers like that for opportunities to, above a certain size project, to have that requirement. Does, does the city have any incentives now for solar?
No, not financial incentives. I mean, there are some provided at the state level, but the city only has expedited permitting. That's kind of, we just kind of handle the permitting in a fast and efficient manner, but there's not financial incentives.
What's a typical permit cost for a? What's a typical permit cost for a?
It's a few hundred bucks.
Excuse me?
A few hundred dollars.
Okay. So, no big opportunities for savings there, but?
Not significant savings, but yeah, we could look at that as a financial incentive.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, yeah, what other financial incentives are there for people to do something, retrofit, you know, where it could tip them to pull on the trigger on?
Most of those are really done by the utility, so that, again, is a question for CCE. If you're in charge of the utility, you can look at different incentives because you're more in control of them. But right now, yeah, the city has limited ability to incentivize solar installations because we just don't cover the cost of electricity.
Okay. And I think all options should be on the table, so the CCE is something that I think would be good to get more information on, and to us, you know, and really, the city council would be the people that really need to see it. And so, if, I would like to recommend that some sort of presentation be set up, whether that's through Vista Climate Action Plans, through somebody they know. But I'd like to see the pros. I'd also like to see the cons, and I don't know if that's SDG and E coming to talk about the other side of it, but I'd like to get more information on both sides of it, not just one side.
Sure.
But I think that would be helpful to, you know, to us, but yeah, mostly to the council.
Sure. And I think, based on what I'm hearing tonight, it's probably timely to have a sort of a workshop item, and we can have some experts come in and present that to both bodies.
Thanks.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. This is just something I was wondering about as I was reading through this. As they were, toward the end, they were talking about the residential forecast for Vista, the new households and that sort of thing. And it said in 2005, it was 29,506, and they project by 2020, it will be 30,232. That's an increase of only 726 households in all that time?
That's just based on Sandag's modeling. It's not an accurate estimate of the actual number of units, but we could give you a more precise number of the actual number of units that we've generated from 2005 till now. It's just that the future estimates are just based on Sandag's projections.
Yeah. Okay.
If you look at their growth model, when you get up to the 2030 and 2035, they have a significant increase that kind of catches up with where we think we'll really be.
Okay. But then, okay, so we have however many households, and the forecast, or looking at the emissions by the community of Vista, not the city of Vista, and transportation is 57% of the emissions. And so, what I kept wondering as I was reading through all of this is, we keep adding the new housing developments and the apartments, and so, more of those mean more people, more households, and more cars. And I'm just flummoxed to try and think how we're going to cut down on emissions if we keep adding. I don't see any answer to that, but that's just a question that occurred to me.
So, this plan accounts for the growth that is anticipated in Sandag's projection. That's what the curves were that we gave you. There's a drop in the next few years because of all the state and federal efforts, but then it catches up and starts going up again, and that's just from natural growth. It's going to occur, people moving here and people that live here that are having kids. But yeah, that's assumed in the modeling. So, the numbers that I showed you earlier on that we have to get to in 2030 and 2035 are just based on those growth models that Sandag uses to project our regional growth.
Okay. Thank you.
If we don't have any growth, we won't have to have as much reduction. That's really what it's about, but it anticipates that.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Connolly, is it appropriate, then, for future projects that come before us, especially the early design reviews, that we kind of try to enhance the developers to be pro-solar and put solar on all those buildings with, as an extra amenity?
It's certainly a possibility. We don't have it as a requirement in our code, and so, at the staff level, we don't like to impose those things if we don't have the ability to do so with the code behind us. The Commission has a little bit more discretion, and so, if there are areas where you feel it's appropriate for benefit to the community, you can certainly recommend that. With respect to EV charging, there is a state requirement that you have to plum for it in certain-sized projects, which we're now requiring, but if the Commission wanted to ask for those types of requirements in certain-sized multifamily projects, I think that's a fair thing to ask for. Again, as Mr. Looney pointed out, it's just about balancing those requirements, but yeah, where there are opportunities for it and the Commission feels it's appropriate, you can certainly impose those requirements.
Okay. Thank you. One other, just a comment. Sonic is really missing the boat here. They've got all of the roofs. You drive in, they always advertise to come for the happy hour, their cutesy little drinks, so you come in for a drink and get a charge, you know? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well said.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. John, I think the Commission has provided you with some very good input tonight. I agree with most of what's been said. I did have a couple of questions concerning the urban tree program. Did I understand you to say that we can only count what the city does and not what we, what the private developers put in?
There's two ways to sort of measure this, based on my conversation with a consultant. One is a canopy, which evaluates a percentage of a canopy citywide, which accounts for really all of the tree growth that's there. The other is an inventory of what is publicly owned and maintained, which is a smaller number. We've historically only kept an inventory for city trees since that's what we're responsible for, so it counts the parks and the medians and the right-of-way areas. But because a private owner doesn't have any limitation from removing a tree if they want to, we don't always go down that road. We will evaluate both options, though. We probably get more benefit from using a canopy number, and it's not something that's in our current plan, so we'll be looking at that and trying to establish possibly canopy goals where we can increase that number.
Okay. Very good. I was just thinking of the Monarch Buena Vista project, where we have taken out a lot of trees right now for the development, but coming back in, they were going to plant some fairly significant trees as part of the requirements for their project, so?
Yeah, we removed probably 60 or 70 mature trees. They'll probably plant 220 or 30 trees, I think, in the development overall, so there will be that time lapse when you lost a more mature tree, but ultimately, we'll get there.
I'd just be interested if, in projects like that where there was a requirement for a landscaping plan, they're required to maintain that landscaping plan, that maybe we could count those trees also towards our goal?
Sure.
And then, the composting facility, just a thought that occurred to me. You said that Edco was going to do a composting facility?
So, Edco's building?
Is that going to be here in the city?
No, it won't be. I think it's in Escondido or San Marcos. I can't remember. It's east of us, but they're building a digester right now. The state's requirements mandate that I think by 2019 or 2020, large commercial generators have to recycle their organic waste.
Right.
And Edco's creating that program to start that, and then it'll get smaller, but it only, right now, the state law only applies to commercial generators up to a certain size, and that phases in over a few-year period. They have not identified that they're going to get into the residential customers at this point.
Okay. And I think that's where I was going. I've always been impressed with Oceanside and their composting facility, and you can go get mulched there if you're a citizen of Oceanside. I'd really like to see something like that for the City of Vista also.
So, yeah, I can get some more information from Edco on their program, and I'll bring that back as well. They have a pretty developed program that they're putting into play with the digester that they're building. It's a big investment for them.
Very good. Okay. Commissioner Garrison, one last question?
Yeah, one last question. Mr. Alderson was here earlier. I'm sorry he left, but, so the Vista Unified School District buildings and so forth don't factor into this at all, correct?
That's correct.
And that means playgrounds don't factor in for open land?
No, we do account for the, the open space that's accounted for in the plan is preserved open space. So, no, you're correct. It doesn't account for the playgrounds on the school sites.
So, could the Vista Unified School District buildings have a negative impact on what the city has to do?
I wouldn't see it that way. I think there's a lot of opportunities there, but if they just kind of maintain status quo, it's not necessarily going to hurt our own efforts. It would just assist us if they decided to do more.
I could see if there's a better cooperation of using, for instance, their facilities, playgrounds, ballfields, that would mean more, more open space or more playground acreage. So, I know we're working very closely with them, but I think that would be a great opportunity to expand on that whole recreation, open space.
Okay. Any comments from our student commissioners?
I guess, oh, so Manuel Martinez, I guess regarding the whole, like, implementing the, like, solar energy, I guess, into schools, I was thinking, like, in the high schools, would the parking lots count as that open space, or would that not? Because maybe you can implement, like, the little canopies with the panels inside, and it would pay for itself, like, with the schools using up the energy, right? Wouldn't that kind of cancel out itself some way? I don't know. But yeah.
A good idea.
So, we could get credit for solar installations that the district does if they wanted to join our efforts in the plan preparation, but we'll engage them and see if that's something that we can get them to anticipate in.
Very good. Okay. This was a discussion item tonight, so there's no action needed by the Commission. Would like to thank members of the public who came and spoke tonight. I think you've given us some good ideas. We've made some suggestions to staff to take on to the city council, and this item will continue to work through the rest of the year before we come back for a public hearing.
And I will be sending out notices for the community meeting to everyone who spoke tonight, as well as all the people on our list that attended the community meeting. We expect the next one will probably be in the May timeframe.
Okay. Very good. All right. The next item on our agenda is comments from the Community Development Director, City Planner.
So, I don't have anything tonight, other than we won't have a meeting on the 6th of March. As you probably already know, our next meeting will be the 20th of March. We have a dinner tomorrow night with the city council that I think most of you are coming to, so we'll look forward to seeing you at that. And I don't have any other updates unless Ms. Chow knows. I think we're good.
Okay. Very good. Students from Rancho, when we adjourn, if you want to come up, we'll sign your forms for you. Other than that, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourn until March 20th and tomorrow night.